I think I did find that. Yeah, we don't have the notes today. There's only more appeals to day on 98.25. Fault order, then, Secretary. Harry Adams.
Here.
Patrick Stewart.
Here.
Catherine Driscoll.
Here.
And Tammy Kerr.
Here.
Denise Webster absent. And Denise Webster is absent. There's been a revision to the agenda. Call for approval to the agenda, however, the early agenda, the first item has been withdrawn, which is the public hearing dimensional variance on 66th Street. Now, given that this, we've excluded this, do we have an approval of the agenda? Okay. Second, second. Ball in favor. I do not have minutes from the previous meeting of June 27th. To be determined. Okay. Yes, that over. There any public comments on non-agenda items of any other issue? Then we'll proceed with the public hearing use determination and appeal decision 03-20-003-039-006528 Blue Star Highway and the seeking interpretation of use and appeal decision of the planning commission. Whether to proceed? Now, we've all read the open hearings, correct? Is there someone here to make public comments or personal comments? For Blue Star?
Hey there. How are you?
I'm good.
Seth Arthur, regarding my behalf of Blue Star. And I presume this is an ability to give a little bit of a presentation on the file.
Sure.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the zoning board's appeal meeting today. Reviewing our appeal, just by way of a quick background. After giving feedback from a preliminary site plan review, the planning commission made a use determination in a three to two vote, that Blue Star proposed site plan for office building was not permitted in the C1 zoning district. As many of you probably saw in the materials, the two bases for that determination was that number one, the proposed office building was not consistent with the intent and permitted uses in C1 because Blue Star is a global business that does not serve local community. That was basis number one. And number two was that storage was not permitted in C1. There are four key reasons that should compel the ZBA to reverse the PC's use determination related to Blue Star's proposed plan. The ZBA should reverse the PC and approve Blue Star's use for an office building in C1. Because number one, the planning commission had no authority to make the use determination. Number two, Commissioner Webster had a conflict of interest which should not have participated in the decision. Number three, Blue Star's office building is permitted in C1. The PC incorrectly relied upon an argument that Blue Star did not serve the local community. And fourth, number four, Blue Star's office building is permitted in C1 because the garage on the proposed site plan is accessory and incidental to the office use. The township planning staff prepared a memo outlining these issues. I appreciate the sharing that with us in advance. And I'll discuss a few of those items afterward. I did not want to spend too much time on issues number one and number two in the staff's memo. However, I want to note that Blue Star disagrees with the staff on those two points. On issue number one, the PC did not have authority to make a use determination because the ordinance and zoning enabling act say that the ZBA makes ordinance interpretations, including whether Blue Star's proposed use can exist in C1 Street. On issue number two, Commissioner Denise Webster certainly had a conflict of interest, especially considering the PC bylaws only require an appearance of a conflict. Her proximity to the project creates a conflict or at least an appearance. The fact she owns property close enough to get notice of a public hearing under the ZBA is the issue. Additionally, we disagree with staff that her vote did not ultimately matter. She made the motion for the PC to determine that Blue Star, they're used to that fit into the C1. So had her conflict been addressed, the motion may not have been brought. So on those first two issues, Blue Star requests the ZBA to find in its favor on those issues and to validate the PC's determination. I do want to spend a little more time on issues number three and number four. Moving along to number three, the PC incorrectly relied upon an argument that Blue Star did not serve the local community. The proposed office building is permitted in C1. Table 4.30's plain language for general offices and services in the C1 zoning district allows for this. As a result, the PC denial Blue Star proposed use was incorrectly based on the idea that the PC believed Blue Star did not serve the local community. The PC should not have relied upon this intent statement in section 4.20A of the ordinance. Again, the plain language of table 4.30 allows general offices in C1. I'd cite Melbourne City of East Detroit or 37 Mitch, 132 of 143, which could also cite it in the staff's memorandum. Or the proposition that Michigan law stands to say that intent statements and ordinance cannot trump a plain language. And also draw the ZBA's attention to section 1.50 of the ordinance that any text within the tables are required. Worth emphasizing, both the township attorney and staff appear to agree with Blue Star's position on this, given the A525 staff memo on issue number three. However, if the ZBA somehow finds that the local community standard still insisted for C1, which we believe would be contrary to law, we also cite an appeal letter that you received law and examples of why Blue Star would keep that standard. So in conclusion on number three, Blue Star respectfully request that the ZBA reverse the PC's determination that the proposed use of the office building is not permitted in C1, particularly as it relates to the fact that the PC did not believe it meant the local community's case. Moving on to number four, the PC incorrectly relied upon an argument that Blue Star proposed garage was not allowed in C1. And I know this was referenced in the staff memo. The garage will be incidental and accessory to the office building. It is not warehousing or distribution, I want to be very clear about that. The proposed garage is an accessory use, and accessory use is defined as a use of a nature customarily clearly incidental and subordinate to the main use. That's in section 22.10 of the ordinance. In this case, the principal use is generally office. This new facility is an office building meant to be an administrative headquarters with office people inside. The garage was clearly incidental and subordinate to that office use. For instance, the 8,446 square feet of the project, only about 2,034 square feet of that is the garage, so just about 25%. So clearly, the garage is incidental or subordinate to the office building. Again, the garage is not warehousing or distribution. Warehousing and distribution is defined as facilities or redistributing goods from one truck to another that serve as intermediate transfer points and are primarily used for staging loads and temporary storage where vehicles and trailers are regularly maintained and stored. That's the definition from the ordinance. But here, the garage uses storage and landscaping maintenance equipment, shovels, rakes, wheelbarrows, hoses, seasonal furniture, a grill or patio lunch area, snow removal, like a snow blower, and other miscellaneous items such as parking for the CEO and CFO. This fits in the ordinance's definition of a garage. It's a building with overhead doors that is used to park vehicles and/or incidental personal. It does not qualify as warehousing and distribution. No objects will be stored there to be sold offsite. There will be no wash equipment stored in the garage. There will only be a few trade show items like screens and tables and curtains that will be placed there to be used at trade show events. So that means the garage is not primarily used for staging loads and temporary storage where vehicles and trailers are regularly maintained and stored. There's not an exchange of items where vehicles come in and out. This is not distribution warehouse. A decent analogy is that the proposed garage is used to store things, not suitable for the office. Cars, office storage, is no different than the garages you have at home. They may store lawnmowers and other yard equipment, but that does not make the underlying use of your garage a landscaping use. How do you know, this is probably the important question based on what the staff's memo said, how do you know the garage will only be used as Blue Star says? It's an important question. And that's because the evidence in the record says that. Blue Star has continuously represented the garage will not be used for warehousing and distribution. That happened in correspondence with the township in a memo from Nederbilt in March that happened from emails in March. But most importantly, I really want to focus on this, to the extent the ZBA is still concerned about how this garage would be used, the township ordinance allows the planning commission and the board to approve site plans with reasonable conditions. That's section 13.60 of the ordinance. Certainly, Blue Star's site plan could be approved with the reasonable condition that the garage not be used for warehousing or distribution. That protects the township and ensures that Blue Star does what it says it will and won't use that garage for warehousing or distribution. It's a simple and easy fix that protects everyone. Additionally, as the township knows, if there's still concern, the township has a morse mechanism down the road against Blue Star if the garage were to no longer be used for things other than warehousing and distribution down the road. So the township has the ability to make sure this is done the way the applicant says. I don't think it's appropriate, as the PC did, to deny something or make a determination on speculation about what Blue Star may or may not do. The evidence on the record is what Blue Star has said. We are going to use this as a garage. It's not for warehousing, it's not for distribution. And really, that's for the township to take the applicant's word until the applicant is no longer on. And then the township has the ability to enforce against the actual applicant. As well as, again, easy, an easy way to avoid this is a reasonable condition on the site plan that says, okay, you said the garage is going to be used for a garage and not for warehousing and distribution. Then we're making a condition that that's the case, and you no longer have approval if you don't follow that. Again, I want to emphasize, this is not like other company facilities. I know there was some talk in the past about worry about other facilities being larger and being more light industrial. That's not the case here. The office building is meant to be an administrative headquarters. It's got 20 small offices. It's not some large open area that would be conducive to light industrial uses. Property does not have three-phase power available that would only be used for light industrial uses. The plan submitted did not include upgrading power systems. So the idea here is that this is truly an office building, with office folks inside the office building. In any comparison to how EST companies has used other facilities, it is completely different. And that frankly relevant to this application or to this issue that is before the ZBA. And again, I want to make a finer point here. I know that in the record, there was discussions about how Blue Star EST and other facilities, you know, had used light industrial uses. If you notice, those other facilities are located in close proximities to military bases. The strategic consideration in this location is that there is no military base nearby because we're using it only as an office space, right? We're not using it like a light industrial use that maybe other facilities have used in the past. So again, the, if anything, the location and choice was intentional because it shows that this is different than it's been done at other facilities. This is truly an office building. Because the proposed garage is an incidental accessory use to the proposed office building, Blue Star respectfully request that the ZBA reverse the PC's determination that Blue Star's proposed use is not permitted in the C1 district. Given the four key reasons mentioned previously, Blue Star requests that the ZBA find the proposed office building is allowed in the C1 district. Remanding back to the PC is not appropriate for the use determination. It's the ZBA's jurisdiction to interpret the zoning ordinance and what is allowed in the C1 district. That's clear in section 2048.1 of the ordinance. That's clear in the zoning enabling act, MCL 12536031. As well as, I note that the ordinance in section 2048L4 also says that the ZBA can reverse or affirm and modify a decision, can even issue permits in certain instances. So we don't think remanding back to the PC on this use determination makes sense. We think it makes sense for the ZBA to correct the PC's incorrect decision. That's what we have for our presentation. And of course, will be available for reference. My client is here today and can speak to certain things related to the company if this appears suspicious. Thank you all.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, can we ask them now?
Well, why don't we hear if there's a rebuttal, contrary opinion to this, and then we will be able to address some of those. If you have to address.
I can address each issue before my point, or we can go issue by issue, however the board prefers.
Well, I'd like to hear the decision, and then I think we should proceed to take a vote. Unless you have questions of counsel before we take a vote, which I think you do. So we'll make sure the questions are answered before we kind of vote. But please.
Lene, would you like me to present?
Sure.
The zoning administrator and I are trying to play.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. I have, I've been courtesy of a constable attorney. I've been a township attorney for quite a while, but I guess I haven't met some of the ZBA first up for us. So we're anticipating that this might be best to take this in four separate votes, one on each of the issues. I'll kind of go through the four issues in the same order that councilfully I picked it. With the first, the first issue, we do believe the planning commission had the authority to make this determination. The application was originally brought to the planning commission as a site plan application. In the course of the first meeting, you know, some questions arose regarding because of the size of the garage on the on the site plan as to whether this was a permitted use. I know it also was tabled, so that some more information could be gathered on that issue. And then at the next meeting, the planning commission took the vote specifically on the issue of use and determined that it wasn't a permissible use and it didn't make sense to go forward with all the other factors of site plan approval. So it's basically just one component for, one component of the site plan review and one reason for denying the site plan. Under the wording of the ordinance, we think the planning commission didn't have jurisdiction to do that. And we recommend that the, this board reject the argument to the contrary filter that it was proper to take a vote on this issue. Respect to conflict of interest, I would lay down the, in the memo, why this appeared not be a conflict of interest at defining the planning commission bylaws. We do think even more importantly than those issues, it's just not a reversible basis for a versus many questions to sit in. Because this was a three to vote, in order to rule in favor of the applicant on site plan, they would have needed to have three to the other way. So even if she had recused herself, it would have split two-two, which has the effect of a denial of site plan. So ultimately, conflict or not, this wouldn't have been, this application wouldn't have gone in the applicant's favor. We don't think the board necessarily needs to get into the issue of whether this was a conflict. We just think it's kind of harmless error if it was a conflict. And the wording of the motion, of the proposed motion, is such that if you think either that's not a conflict or you think that doesn't matter when it's a conflict, this wording covers both draft and nows. This recommendation, both in, it's in your package. With respect to issue three, the applicant is correct. Both Lene and I are, the zoning administrator Wells and I are recommending that the board revert the planning commission's decision on the specific rationale. We don't believe the ordinance can be plausibly read to say that only businesses that serve the local autonomy are allowed in the zoning district. We think if the board were to affirm that rationale, it would likely be reversed by circuit court. And for that reason, we would recommend we recommend reversing on that particular ground. And that leaves the final issue, which if you accept the recommendation of the first three, the final issue will be the determinative issue. Will determine whether the applicant gets to proceed with their site plan application to the planning commission or whether it's denied. As the final decision of the township, in which case they could seek review in circuit court. Later, the zoning administrator nor I have a recommendation on this issue. We do think there's kind of some factual questions about what this, what the garage is going to be used for, how this new one is to the primary use. Help of the applicant to kind of address those factual issues. We would recommend that you, if you have further questions about that, whether it's consistent with the materials that were submitted, that you could ask the applicant, either through the attorney or the applicant's family itself, to kind of resolve those factual disputes or factual issues, and then make a determination as to whether this meets the definition of office in the application as opposed to the definition of warehousing and distribution. So office, general offices and services are allowed in this district, warehousing and distribution is not allowed in this district. And we provided two alternative motions, one that you could use to affirm the decision of the planning commission to be contrary to the applicant or one that you could use to revert to the decision of the applicant. In which case, assuming that you've accepted the recommendations on the other motions, would have the effect of the applicant being able to back the planning commission to discuss the other factors for cycling. So have any answer, any questions?
I have a couple. Excuse me.
Are there questions, anything to do with first, second, and third? No. Okay.
I, I understand the determination was made based on.
In the third, at the planning permission level, we just don't think that that was a proper basis. Would we be being, with the administrator Wells and I.
Did the planning commission have all the same information that we've been given here on the use of the garage?
I was not at those meetings.
Yeah, I can answer that. They, they did have the same information. There was testimony, and I included the minutes in the packet. The garage, what we, was described as having trade show equipment in it that would be stored on pallets and moved with a forklift. That was not said today, but that was testimony in that meeting. They described it as being used for parking of the CEO and CFO's vehicles. It was not described as being used for lawn equipment. There was a, the first version of the site plan that was submitted had the footprint that you see in your packet, but it had an additional storage building on the site, which they removed between the two meetings. And that building was used for lawn equipment and snow removal and patio furniture. So that's not on the site plan now. It's been described as this garage. It has those overhead doors. The planning commission, yeah, talked about that.
So was this essentially an issue of trust? Or is this an issue of not having a clear view of what it was going to be used for? Got to be one of them. Because they're saying it's not a distribution business. I was in business. It either is or it isn't a commercial business. Story. Materials for shelters. Turn around here. That isn't, that's just something companies do. So the question is, is it or isn't? Seems to me.
Yeah. Can I say something as well? Please, I have a grievance in the town too. We have a garage, very similar, and we have an overhead door. And we store all our stuff in there too for open houses, signs, things that we need. That doesn't mean that I'm taking advantage of the situation of being in an industrial, not being in an industrial zone. I also sell houses, and I have houses where I walk in their garages in their personal homes, and they have forklifts. Because they store stuff in their own personal garage. So if, if this is this multi-use and single, you know, you can have a family home, which I've seen on the search as well. Why do you care what they're putting in their garage? Is my view. If it's a distribution, there are going to be sustained trucks going in and out. And then I don't think that's the intended use, and I don't think it's allowed. But I think putting, you know, a limit on that so that we know for sure that he doesn't do that is a condition, I think that would be fine. But. Do you have anything you'd like to?
You know, I agree with both of, um, I mean, reading through all this, the actual digital play, I mean, they did, that's the only thing. What you said was going to be stored in there, which makes sense for any business of any type. It's just one of those gray areas with this new.
The only thing I would say is I kind of disagree with the math of the council. When I calculated the footprint, the garage would be 37%. Not 25, which I thought was a substantial amount compared to the whole. And we may have accessory acceptance, but I don't think we have the lot just per se that are allowed under C1. So that was my concern.
Is there a, is there a, the garage has to be a certain?
No, there's no red, but it's in the C1. It doesn't say, I mean, it says businesses, of course, we're all in agreement on that, but it doesn't ulteriorly say garages are accepted well in the C1 district. Correct.
In fact, storage is not permitted in C1. Like self-storage.
Star storage in C1? Well, that's the business per se that is doing that. It's not attached. That is the.
Self-storage. Um, and that's a pre-existing, right? That's a, that's been there, that pre-exists the selling or bits.
I, I think, thank you very much. I, unless there's any objections, I would like to go to and see if there's any discussion on the first issue that would present a.
Rebound on those points or?
Um, well, I was just asking if there was any question on this point.
Okay, yeah.
I don't believe that's part of the issue.
Sure, yes.
Do we need to open the public hearing? Um, I think we do. Public comment. Very public comment. But just to make a comment about this, this issue that's before. Is there any more? You're in, um, I'll pause over the. Is there anybody on Zoom that was just making a comment? Pardon? I'm checking. Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry not to be there in person. Uh, I'm at work in Minneapolis today. Nicole and Cliff Lewis at six, five, one, five Sanctuary Trail. Our backyard um shares a property line with this proposed property and we've been at all of these meetings. So I just want to first of all, say thank you for taking the time to um to have this uh appeal meeting today and to so carefully and thoughtfully look at all of this. Um, I also want to say thank you to um the applicant for um the adjustments that were made in between the first and second rounds of the site plan were very much in good, um, I think in good favor and in good spirit. And I think were because uh they listened to the neighbors. There was a a room full of neighbors there the first time through. And I do think those site plan adjustments made after that first meeting were um were good ones made. Um, the questions in front of you now are ones that are much outside my personal purview of of understanding any of this. Um, and very complicated. And uh, having, having attorneys there makes that even more so obvious to me today. So um, I just wanted to recognize all of that and say, um, the, the, the footprint of said garage, the attached garage. Um, Linay, thank you for confirming that the site plan remained without the secondary building. Um, I was concerned that we were going back to the first version, so I'm glad that's not true. Um, thirty seven percent feels weird to me in an office building, but um also, we just, we just don't know um the entirety of of the use of it and not sure that we ever will. But um, generally, thank you for taking the time to go through this. Um, it seems like um all of the thought is is there. Um, I, I don't envy you. I sit on the school board. I know how difficult decisions can be and I understand from your seat how this can be. So um, just thank you for representing us. And um, if I can answer anything from the nearby neighbors, I'm certainly happy to, but thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Is there someone else on Zoom that would like to speak? Going once, going twice? No one else on Zoom wants?
Public comment, it's closed. And I thought, I don't know if this is the way of doing it or not, but I, is anybody on the board of any issues with issue number one? Other than issue number one, the planning commission is afforded to make the determines. You have any comment on that or any? Well, then I would entertain a motion on the planning commission's authority to make a deterrent.
The argument of B C Max, yours is sin. Whether you propose, you propose in a site plan.
Sir, second. All in favor, I oppose. Motion carries. That's going to issue number two. Conflict of interest. Um, the applicant argues that the planning commissioner, the new web stewardship should have recused herself. Um, I know that there is in the P C bylaws, planning commission bylaws. But there's a required refusal from a corporation, company, partnership, or any other entity in which the planning commissioner has an ownership interest or otherwise within current financial impact. If the application is approved or denied. And that is in the bylaws of the planning mission. So given that, is there any objection or support? Or presentation of it was a concept, and it's rather moot at this point, but um, is there a motion in terms of whether we agree with the planning commission? That there was no conflict of interest or that there was a concept of interest?
I agree that that if you look at it one way, it could be an obstacle. But realistically, um, the issue of being close up to get no retention. I think it's, it's.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anyone else that would? I would entertain a motion. One way or another, on the content of interest.
Oh, motion to reject the applicant that are doing on the P C.
Sir, second.
A second.
Eric seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion has carried unanimously. Now, also, would you like to come up and map on issue three, issue four?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to touch base on a couple of things related to that. Um, number one is relates to the calculations with the garage. Um, and I'll let my, my client step in if I say this correctly. I, I think the calculations was considering square footage on the first floor and the second floor. It's a two-story building. That calculation of mine, in comparison with the garage, I think makes it about twenty five percent.
I just did the total building footprint, which was fifty five, sixteen square feet.
I'm just trying to call for the second.
Right, I, I, I understand.
Right, so that, that might be some of the discrepancy the Z B A was talking about there. Um, just to clarify. People.
What, what are you doing on the second floor? Second floor and, and second floor and everything below that second floor is office. So the phone off to comprise of the item that's actually number two. It looks like this driving home. Yeah, it's a thousand. Or just like eighty, eighty-four, forty-six minus thousand thirty-four. The total square footage of forty-three. That's how we came up with this, which are beautiful place.
I just want to make that clarify for the Z B A. Um, I also wanted to touch base on, on, on issue number four as it relates to this constant concern about what is actually this going to be used as this garage? I just want to remind the Z B A again, certainly you have the ability, the township has the planning commission as part of the site plan to make a reasonable condition that simply says, we don't have to really worry about what you say or not. Say, we're going to give you a site plan conditioned on the fact that you're not going to use it for warehousing and distribution. That's point number one. Okay, that, that solves everyone's issue, really. That's point number one. So that's why I think it's worth voting in our favor on issue number four, because the P C has that ability to condition the site plan. That's number one. Number two, I, I would also say that um I appreciate the, the background as relates to um, the applicant trying to be as amenable as possible, changing things, taking into neighbor's considerations. There was an accessory building at one point. It was understood from the public that was not um well-liked, and so that was taken away. Um, and a lot of those accessory issues were then thought of to be used in the garage. And so that was the thought process there, hence the storing of of the um snow equipment and the landscape stuff and the chairs and things like that. Um, I also appreciate the, the practical standpoint that this is what businesses do. Um, we will not be having trucks going in and out and distributing objects that are sold off-site. That's not, that's not the purpose. It really is a garage um for all intensive businesses. Um, i- i- is it a big garage in the sense that, you know, it's taller than what a normal garage is? Maybe so, but that's so it makes sense with the building. So it looks like, you know, it's part of the building. Um, and, and again, I just want to emphasize i- i- in my estimation, there doesn't really need to be a lot of analysis as it relates to what is the use of the garage, because it can be conditioned that that use is not warehousing and distribution. And, and we are here as the applicant representing that it's not the case. And so again, I would just further um express that I, I don't think it's an appro, I don't think it's appropriate for a body to deny something or make a determination on speculation that the applicant might not be forthcoming or honest on what they're going to do. I think you have to take the applicant's word for it and use your enforcement ability at that not being true down the road. Um, and again, uh, and I know I'm kind of um maybe overemphasizing this, but really this idea of a reasonable condition solves it all because uh we say we're not going to use it for warehousing distribution and a condition says we can't. So uh, and I don't know if there's anything else for my clients.
Um, I did the math, the office pays accounts for sixty-four hundred and twelve square feet. The garage is two thousand thirty-four. And I just to go off and kind of go along with what Patrick said, to me, um, it's a challenge in my integrity to tell me I'm not going to do in my building what I say we're going to do. And so to go along with what Seth said, we're going to have even pass a condition of the site plan, say, you do it. We have, as you said, we, we do not intend to do anything for warehousing, storage, anything other than this event. So that is for sure.
Again, and again, that's why I would again ask the Z B A to find uh for the applicant on issue three, uh, along with what the staff, the, the, the attached attorney and staff said on issue three, as well as number four, because the garage is an accessory use that is incidental in accordance to the office building use. A, because we represent that's the case and we told you what we're using for. And B, uh, certainly the township has the reasonable condition, ability to make sure that so. Um, and again, that, that would be my position and I, I really do appreciate all the, the time and, and listening to us. I think you all.
Also, I just wanted to back up.
Yes, sure.
That the reason the garage is in town is just to come along to the height of the building?
One.
One of the reasons.
Oh.
One of the reasons.
And out of the offices, actually, you stand out in with that area.
Okay, I, I just thought maybe.
It's funny, if you, um, in the packet on the first, the order, and you'll see there's restrooms and medical rooms and then. Don't be inside the garage and that's why it looks like it's a larger garage than actually is because of the. And everything above that is.
Thank you.
So again, I would say the Z B A to please find for the applicant on issue three and issue four as well.
I don't want to detail, but how is a corporation organized? Is this, it, where's the corporate headquarters of this company? That's in Arizona. The business was started in Arizona and we were involved in a lot of D O D work and that required us to be nearby the bases that we serve. And you always say like, we have them in Hawaii, we've got a lot of military bases there. We have them in Guam, South Carolina, California, right on Camp Hamilton. So all of our facility and we're, we're now in the process of building a facility in, in the state of Washington, um, and it's you have military bases in there. We have no military bases here in this area. The reason we even have a facility um here is my son Eric and I are the managing members. It's an L L C with our headquarters, like I said, in Arizona, but we've lived here. I've lived here for, or at least been here for six, five years. I've lived here for about twenty-five years full-time. So you're the, the two of you are the managing members of that corporation. So really, it's all, it's all. How many or what percentage of your employees and management live reasonably within the greater South Atlantic area? All of us. Um, the service room we have always made. So, but they're all in the house and our intent is to provide good paying professional jobs to people that reside in the area. And, and that, we, the reason we want to be here versus where we are next to thirty-six is we're closer to the term for anybody from White House and maybe Hudsonville, between Hudsonville and us also closing the house. We built a building, saw the miles. Five, some, you have ladies coming there, but five miles, that's still, that makes a difference to people. Right, it's, it's ten miles in terms of, I mean, ten miles, so. And the last thing is the, um, um, the, the Holland Hospital building, um, I think is almost as homeless as. The inventory.
Really?
And, and uh, you know, we weren't sitting in the planning meeting. So it's impossible for us to know what, what this conversation was. Um, but I wonder if that was questioned. So I, I I'm saying straight, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if this is not something here that we don't know about. What, what is, what was fundamentally the thing is a garage? The basic reason why planning commission didn't want this, you know, was there some other reason?
I really don't feel comfortable speaking for all of the planning commission, but um, you know, in the minutes, you can see their discussion about it. Um, yeah, the, the garage and that use determination letter, you know, overhead doors, the height of the garage door. Um, the, the concern that the, the garage is, and it tips the scale away from the office use that it's.
Sound a good question though.
I, I just.
Sure, sure. I just don't want to talk, speak for that.
I want to check, I want to check out. So as I said, we weren't in the planning commission meeting, but it seems to me that we have reasonable assurance issue is going to be put in place to ensure that it is, it is what they say. This is, I don't, I don't see the issue compared to other buildings.
And just architectural, just being a committed designer and very good engineer. If you had a smaller door on there, it would look very dwarfed at the size.
Can you all hear?
At the size of the building.
Would you like to speak to one of the time?
Yeah, just to kind of sum up what you said originally, the big issue was our assumption. And so we, and we had, because the ordinance says that we can only have about twenty, twenty percent of our, our front building. We put the uh highway in the front and all the back as the ordinance says. And then when we had our first meeting, the issue of the accessory building came up. And then there was concern about all the life and parking and and so someone suggested on the planning commission that we could move the parking to the front. We moved the drive, but not, that's still required approval once we we applied for approval or approval of the site plan. We have never submitted a site plan for approval. This was all for discussion. And because we wanted, one, we're concerned about the neighbors because we know they're in community. Our, our sons, kids, they go to school in front of them. And we're the members of the community. We want to be, you know, we want to be in tune with what the neighbors are concerned about because we want to know neighbors. And if you thought our neighbors were right now, I think you'd find that. But, um, we have tried by showing, okay, well, eliminate this accessory, we think it's going to go on the garage. Well, to drive off front, we'll say if we can get it without approval, we're willing to do that. But we, we should be able to have the right to use the, the C1 property in a permitted use.
And I understand that the only issue is that storage is not by and in itself permitted in C1. And that's been the issue with the planning commission and with some of us.
Is, is, when they talk about storage, does that, does that mean store for commerce? Or people can't store solo or recover lawn mowers or cars or, you know, I would, I would, I would, it's hard for me to, for us to, to inherit that, I can see how it's, if there's, oh, if there's, if there's. Or, well, if, if, uh, but the point is, is if it's for commerce, it's clear. And if, if they're storing something in their warehouse and they're dealing with their customers or dealing with their other, other, uh, their group centers and we're taking some out of that and sending it to them for commerce, I think that's clearly not allowed.
To bring to that point, that, that, I could correct them wrong, uh, I'll let my client correct them wrong, but we're representing that we're not storing things there, we're not selling, we're not storing products to be sold offsite. It's a few incidental things, like a snowblower or something that you would have in the garage to snowblow the, the driveway or something. It's, it's not like we're storing a bunch of materials and products that are made that we then ship offsite to be sold elsewhere. That's not happening.
For the products that come in and then turn around and move?
Well, I don't know too many shipping or receiving.
Yeah, it's just office building.
No, nothing.
No shipping or receiving.
Yes, some office supplies and.
Just so you're aware, our, our current employment in this area is accounting and sales only. We don't have anybody that would even know how to do any distribution out of this office. Literally, they sit on the phone all day and the, the purpose of it is we have nine employees that are in the area that are all local. We have many more that we'd like to hire, we don't have the space anymore and that's what the intent was for this, was to over, over double our, our capacity for office space and be able to bring in more people. As mentioned, young local people that we've had a lot of success in the sales department.
So is there anything else you'd like to add?
I, I don't think you, I appreciate your time.
Are there any other?
Okay, I must admit, when I sat down and looked, uh, looked at the thing, then I thought, gee, that's all. But when you get into the details of it, the garage is part of the building, I think it's really kind of unfair, but is there no mechanism for the planning commission to, to track this? Do we have to, do we have to make this decision?
We, we make the decision. Thank you. Any other questions? Questions, I would, go to item number three. Which is which was, um, uh, I would entertain a motion to reverse the planning commission, but if somebody else could make that motion.
Um, I'm not sure, I don't think it.
Right here.
Right here. Motion to reverse the planning mission determination that's closed use is not in C1 directly based on idea that it does not serve or could be.
So the motion is then to reverse the planning commission's decision on that finding this.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion has been answered. Item number four. Whether applicants propose use is impermissible office use or is an impermissible warehousing and distribution. Are there any questions? I would entertain a motion.
I'm in favor of the motion to put a condition that the garage not be where, used for warehousing and storage. I mean, storage other than, well, yes. Yeah, definitely warehouse and distribution.
Okay, this is the issue for sure.
So.
You need to bring it to that first.
The reverse, yes.
You want to reverse the reverse and then say, and add a condition.
Yeah, so, thank you. I'll make a motion to reverse the PC's determination of the applicant's proposed use is not permitted. The proposed use is not permitted in C1 district? Because of the use of the garage, no, this is the motion.
You read the right one.
I read the right one, okay. Uh, because the use of the garage is incidental and accessory to the office use, this motion.
They used to say, I further move that the, the approved site plan be conditioned on.
I further allow that the approved site plan be conditioned on not using the garage for warehousing and distribution.
Perhaps we should add the commercial. So one of the, one of the problems here is this is a Vegas, so.
All right, well, let's take a vote on the motion as presented. Your second, all in favor of the motion as presented. Opposed? Well, I am very. This is in case we're not clear, motion to reverse the planning commission determination that the, oh, use is not permitted in the C1 district. The use of garage is incidental and accessory.
With the, with the further motion, that, yes, it cannot be used for commercial warehousing or distribution?
Well, that wasn't for, or is that, is that, not in the original motion, that's why I was saying, I did not agree with that motion. But we all, can we take a vote again as a motion as presented?
I move that we add.
No, you can't yet, we have to, if there's a vote on the floor. All, all in favor of the motion as presented? Anybody?
Aye?
Aye.
No, nay, nay, nay. Repose to the motion as presented. Repose to the motion as presented.
It's because you want to add.
We want to add, we want to add, there's an amendment that's proposed.
Oh, okay, back and now.
Who is?
Propose a amendment that, that would commercial.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, nay, motion has been amended. Anything else?
Thank you all.
The block, right? Yeah, we are on a practice, on a practice.
Will you get to the meeting again next month?
Yeah, we do. And we're just gonna second, I want to see. Well, there are.
We haven't met, I, I couldn't.
Yes, we'll meet when we, if you want to join the meeting, do. Okay, I, I, I've done that again. Is there a motion to, that you're leaving? A second? All in favor? Aye, next turn. Okay, so.
Yes, it's, uh, the Tuesday, right, yeah.